The hour of convening having arrived, all members of this house will please report to the floor and take seats. All members, all members of the house will please report to the floor and take your seats. The clerk will ring the bell. All members will please take your seats. We are about to have the morning roll call. We're going to have the morning roll call. All members present will please vote green to signify their presence in the chamber, and the clerk will unlock the machines. Have all members voted? Have all members voted? Have all members now voted? If so, the clerk will lock the machines. Doorkeepers will please close the doors and keep them closed. Well, good morning. It's, uh, this holiday week has started out on a very, very sad and tragic note. And before we begin this morning, I think it's proper that we pause and reflect on the horrific event that occurred yesterday. Just outside of Milwaukee, Wisconsin, a little town called Waukesha, home to about 70,000 people. Families were there for a tradition in that town, a tradition of great joy and celebration, a hometown Christmas parade. In the aftermath of an unspeakable tragedy, five people have been killed and more than 40 injured. There are a lot of questions and no answers. We don't know yet why someone showed such a reckless disregard for human life. But just as the sun rose today, as it has every day, we pray that we may follow the example of our Lord and Savior and be of comfort to those who are suffering today. 2 Corinthians teaches us that blessed be God, even the Father of our Lord Jesus Christ, the Father of mercies, and the God of all comfort, who comforted us in all our tribulation, that we may able, may be able to comfort them which are in trouble. So our prayers today are with our brothers and sisters in Wisconsin. And so with that, I would ask that you all please join with me in a moment of silence for the victims of this tragedy and their families. Thank you. We will begin our day with scripture reading and prayer by the chaplain, after which we will pledge allegiance to the flag of our country. Our chaplain this morning will be introduced by the gentleman from the 9th House District, Representative Will Wade. Representative Wade.
Good morning, colleagues, and thankful to be here with you in this Thanksgiving week. And I do have the honor to introduce today a friend, a former opponent. We met 30 years ago on the opposite sides of the basketball court. And while we were fierce enemies, me being a Dawson County Tiger and he being a Lunkin County Indian, we fought for victory and sometimes we won and sometimes they won. But today, we're friends and we're brothers in Christ, and it's my honor to introduce you, my friend, Reverend Chris Gilbert.
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. We appreciate this opportunity to be here with you today, what a, what a specific privilege and honor that this is. Uh, thank you, Mr. Speaker, for allowing us this time, and Representative Wade for the opportunity to come and speak, um, to all of you this morning. But, uh, we are, we come this way this morning with thankful hearts as we've come to celebrate the week of Thanksgiving. The most precious thing that we should be thankful for is born again believers in Jesus Christ, is that we have an incarnate Emmanuel Savior, and his name is Jesus, and he came to bleed and die for all, and we are thankful, uh, for that this morning. We'll get into the text of the scripture here in just a few seconds, and we do want to be respectful of time this morning. Um, we appreciate the opportunity to be here, but five minutes for a Baptist preacher is like bridling a horse. So we'll try our best, um, to, uh, to be as, as quick as possible, uh, this morning. But, um, uh, I, I thought about this, I want to tell this story just briefly. Uh, there was a man who, um, bought a horse from a pastor, and, uh, the pastor told him, he said, "The only way that you can make the horse go is to say, 'Thank you, Lord,'" and the only way to stop it is to say, "Amen." The man saddled the horse, uh, he said, "Thank you, Lord," and off the horse went, shot out like a jet. And as he was riding rambunctiously and fearing for his life, he began to become acclimated to the situation and began to enjoy himself until he came to a bluff. And in the distance, he could see a cliff, and, uh, in all of his apprehension and anxiety, he could not remember how to stop the horse. And he tried to say everything that he possibly could in the very last second. He screamed up to top of his lungs, "Amen." And the horse stopped, and he looked and peered over the edge of the bluff, and he said, "Thank you, Lord." I appreciate a good laugh among friends, and we thank you this morning for representing the constituents of the state of Georgia. Um, I thank you for your service and for your time, and we'll get it into the scripture reading right here. But, uh, it's a very familiar passage of scripture we want to read from you, uh, the Gospel according to St. John this morning. Uh, the Bible tells us in St. John, Chapter 1, verse number 1, "In the beginning was the Word; the Word was with God, and the Word was God. The same was in the beginning with God; all things were made by him, and without him was not anything made that was made. In him was life, and the life was the light of men. And the light shineth in darkness, and the darkness comprehended it not," skipping down to verse 14. The scripture says, "And the Word was made flesh, and dwelt among us, and we beheld his glory, as of the only begotten of the Father, full of grace and truth. John bare witness of him, and cried, saying, 'This was he of whom I spake: he that cometh after me is preferred before me, for he was before me; and of his fullness have all we received, and grace for grace.' For the law was given by Moses, but grace and truth came by Jesus Christ. No man hath seen God at any time, the only begotten Son, which is in the bosom of the Father, he that hath declared him." And I'm thankful this morning as we stand before you and as you stand as representatives for the state of Georgia, I stand as a representative for my Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ. I'm glad, as I stated in the earlier, uh, previous comment, that he is our Emmanuel, the second person in the Trinity, the eternal begotten Son of God, in and which we have everlasting and eternal life. And I'm glad here this morning that we can have this privilege, and we are thankful for this opportunity, that we can present our Savior, Jesus Christ. And most fortunately that we can be thankful, uh, as we enter this Thanksgiving season, that we have a hope and we have trust in the Lord Jesus Christ. 1 Peter, Chapter 1, verse number 3, "The scripture tells us, 'Blessed be the God and Father of our Lord Jesus Christ, who according to his abundant mercy hath begotten us again into a lively hope, by the resurrection of Jesus Christ from the dead, to an inheritance incorruptible, undefiled, and that fatheth not away, reserved in heaven, who are kept by the power of God.'" Friends, this morning, I'm thankful for you, most certainly that I am thankful for my Savior, Jesus Christ. I have a quote written down right here by the late and great A.W. Tozer, uh, and he writes this, he said, "If a man had his way, the plan of redemption would be an endless and bloody conflict. In reality, salvation was brought not by Jesus' fist, but by his nail-pierced hands; not by muscle, but by love; not by vengeance, but by forgiveness; not by force, but by sacrifice. Jesus Christ, our Lord, surrendered in order that he might win. He destroyed his enemies by dying for them, and conquered death by allowing death to conquer him." Uh, John, uh, the Gospel of John in the 10th chapter and 18th verse, Jesus made this comment. He said, "No man taketh my life from me," he said, "but I lay it down." And I want to remind you just in closing here, uh, briefly, as we get to the 19th chapter and the 30th verse, we see at the crucifixion of our Savior, the Lord Jesus Christ, "There were seven utterances declared, from Calvary, of which the last was this: When Jesus therefore had received the vinegar, he said, 'It is finished,' and he bowed up his, he bowed his head and gave up the ghost." Uh, "It is finished" is a Greek term, the Greek term that is used is "tetelestai," which means "paid in full." I'm glad that we have a Savior that has paid every single debt that we owe. I'm glad that we are free this morning in the Lord Jesus Christ. I want to, uh, if time will allow, want to close with this story. Uh, there was a man who had a son, and he and his son had amassed a wonderful art collection. They had gathered Van Gogh and Picasso, uh, and listen, it was an exquisite art gallery that was worth millions and millions of dollars. His son, uh, was drafted to go serve in the war and was killed in the war. There was a man that served in the war with him, that came and showed up at his father's house. Uh, listen, and he was an artist, and he gave his father, uh, a, a, a picture of his son that he had hand painted. And as time grew, the art collection, the pinnacle of the art collection, uh, began to be the photo and the portrait of his son. Time had come, and the old man died, and in his will, all of his art collection was to be auctioned off. And art collectors from all around the world had amassed and gathered themselves in, uh, to get their hands on these exquisite portraits. Uh, and the auctioneer stood to the front, and as he began to auction off, the, the portrait of his son was placed in front of this incredible, uh, people that had gathered themselves in. And as they gathered themselves in, the auctioneer uncovered the first photo, which was a portrait of his son, and, uh, and he said, "We'll begin opening bids," and they began to become chatter from the crowd, and said, "Listen, we didn't come here to see this, where's the good stuff?" And there was a friend of the man in the back, he said, "I'll give you $10 for the photo of his son." He said, "I knew him, and he was a good boy." Uh, as he called for more, the auctioneer closed the sale at $10, and he stood and declared, "The auction is over." In a, in a, in chaotic disarray, they began to look around at each other, and the auctioneer declared this, he said, "The Father left this in his will: He who buys the Son buys it all. He who buys the Son buys it all." My friends, today, I'm glad that we have one hope in the Lord Jesus Christ. God bless you, have a wonderful Thanksgiving and a Merry Christmas. If you would, stand with us this morning as we go to the Lord in prayer. Our Father, as we are bowed in our presence, God, we thank you, Lord, for this day. We thank you for this wonderful privilege and honor that you have afforded us to stand in front of this great people. We pray heavenly Father, Lord, that you would guide their hearts, guide their minds, touch them, lead them, guide them, and direct them. I pray, uh, that they may serve each other and serve this great state and this great nation. As we've already said, in, uh, in our thoughts and devotion this morning, we thank you most of all for your precious Son, the Lord Jesus Christ. Go with us now, keep us and care for us, we'll thank you and praise you for what you do, for we ask it in the strong, the mighty, sweet and precious name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Doorkeepers will unlock the doors. Chair recognizes Chairman Don Hogan, the Chair of the Committee on Information and Audits.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Your Committee on Information and Audits has read the Journal of the previous legislative days, Friday, November the 19th, and Saturday, November the 20th, and found them to be correct. And furthermore, Mr. Speaker, I appreciate you sending this to me. If I were two-faced, would I be wearing this one, President Abraham Lincoln?
One of my favorite Lincoln quotes, among many. Chairman Hogan, the Chair of the Committee on Information and Audits, reports that the Journal, the previous legislative, previous two legislative days have been read and found to be correct. Is there any objection to the confirmation of the Journal? The Chair hears none, and the Journal is confirmed. My question though, Mr. Chairman, is, did you consult with the minority leader on your report from Saturday? As I recall, you weren't here and he was.
Should I do that now? Is he here now?
He's right over here.
Oh, there he is. Should I take the time to consult with him?
No, I, I, we'll, we'll, we'll trust you on that.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Mr. Leader, do you get it right? Okay. Is there any objection to the confirmation of the Journal? The Chair hears none, and the Journal is confirmed. The clerk will read the resolution establishing the order of business for the day.
Mr. Burns, under 59, this following be establishes the order of business during the first part of the period unanimous consents. Introduction of Bills and Resolutions, Morning Orders.
Is there any objection to the adoption of the resolution establishing the order of business for the day? The Chair hears none, and the resolution is adopted. There are no reports of standing committees at this time. Chair recognizes, House will be adored, the Chair recognizes the Chairman of the House Rules Committee for an announcement.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Ladies and gentlemen, the House Rules Committee will meet in five minutes in room 341. In five minutes, thank you.
When we return, we will do morning orders, so if you signed up for a morning order, please be present. Chair recognizes the Chairman of the Minority Caucus, Chairman Mitchell, for an announcement.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. There will be a very quick meeting of the Democratic Caucus in 10 minutes in room 216. It'll, it'll be, I, I've been corrected, uh, Mr. Speaker, that meeting will take place in five minutes in room 216, Democratic Caucus, thank you.
We will be in recess for the Rules Committee to meet until 10:50, which is 20 minutes, and then we will move on to morning orders. The House will come back to order. Mr. Clark, you want to ring the bell? Okay, we're back to work. Before we go on to morning orders, the Chair wants to recognize on the floor of the House two colleagues of great distinction. All of you might want to be very nice to the first one I'm going to introduce because And coming soon to a town near you, because he's all over the state of Georgia, my friend, the President Pro Tem of the Senate, Senator Butch Miller. Okay, we're going on to morning orders. The Chair will... Is going to limit morning orders to three minutes each. And the Chair recognizes Chairman Parsons for a morning order.
Thank you, Speaker. You know, I've never come down here for morning orders or points of personal privilege very many times in all my time here, and I don't... I know that I've never come down for a morning order about something like this before. But last Thursday, a young couple off Bell's Ferry Road in my district were found slain in their home. Justin Hicks, 31, who was a six-year member of the Cherokee County Fire Department, and his wife Amber, who was an audiology assistant and a graduate of Kennesaw State University, were found slain in their home, and their two-year-old toddler Jacob was in the home when they were found. You know, I can't imagine the grief and the sense of loss that that family has. I would just ask you to keep them in their prayers and the people, their family and their friends and people in that community. I'm going to read something that's very brief that a community group had posted the other day, and I think it kind of covers it. "On November 18th, we woke up to a nightmare. Our Amber and Justin have just been taken from us in a selfless act. We can't understand it, and we are still, as a family and as a community, processing it. Two angels on earth have been taken too soon. They had their whole life ahead of them, and they leave behind a precious little boy." So I'd ask you to, if you would, join me in a moment of silence for them, remembering their life and thinking about the grief and loss of their family and friends. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Chair recognizes Representative Jasmine Clark for a morning order.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Every 68 seconds, an American is sexually assaulted, and every nine minutes, that victim is a child. This gut-wrenching statistic from RAINN, the Rape Abuse and Incest National Network, is one that we should never, ever feel comfortable with in our society. So how can we combat the perpetuation of such heinous acts? Research shows that teaching affirmative consent during adolescence reduces both the perpetuation of and becoming victim to sexual assault. Inclusion of consent in sex education is supported by the American College of Obstetrics and Gynecology and the American Association of Pediatrics. It has bipartisan support and has been implemented in eight states and DC, of which they are controlled by governors or legislators from both sides of the aisle. Employing preventative measures against sexual assault crosses political lines because preventing sexual violence transcends politics. Consent education is a common-sense, researched-backed approach to combating sexual violence that will actually protect our children. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Chair recognizes Representative Doreen Carter for a morning order.
Good morning. Thank you, Speaker Rossam. Good morning, colleagues. This morning, I stand before you to share a resolution commending and congratulating Darrell Peter Honore III for other purposes... And for other purposes. Whereas Darrell Peter Honore III has attained the rank of Eagle Scout, the most distinguished rank conferred by the Boy Scouts of America... That's him up there. And whereas a candidate for the most exceptional award in scouting must complete a rigorous program of training and demonstrate his proficiency in selected scouting techniques and the attainment of the highest ideals of scouting. And whereas only one scout out of 97 ever reaches this lofty level of achievement, and Darrell has amply evidenced his aptitude and competency in mastering the various special skills taught through Scouts BSA program. And whereas this hard-working young man has demonstrated great leadership skills and initiative and has truly exhibited a commitment to scouting, principles of honesty and fairness during his years with the Scouts BSA. And whereas a member of Troop 1833, Darrell created a flag drop box for citizens to dispose of worn and tattered flags, providing citizens of the City of Lithuania with a way to formally and respectfully retire the flags in accordance with tradition and code. And whereas the perseverance and determination displayed by this exceptional young leader set an example for all Georgians, and great success is surely in this young man's future. Now therefore, being resolved by the House of Representatives that the members of this body commend Darrell Peter Honore III for his diligence and dedication in pursuing the highest honor awarded by the Boy Scouts of America, and congratulate him on attaining this prestigious rank and scout. And Darrell is also a senior this year at Christopher Ray Jesuit Atlanta High School, and I have known this young man since birth, and he is an amazing individual. Would you join me in congratulating Darrell Peter Honore III in this high achievement? Thank you. Speaker Rossam, I give the round.
Chair recognizes Representative Debbie Buckner for a morning order.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. We have had a great deal of sadness come before us of late, and I just wanted to start Thanksgiving today. It's my favorite holiday. I mean, what can be better than thanking people and eating great food? But today, I'm thankful for an organization in the state of Georgia that does amazing work and a friend who helped them in a roundabout way. Each year, the Friends of the Georgia Archives sell Christmas ornaments to raise funds for their organization, and each ornament usually picks some architectural detail or something historical about the Capitol to highlight. Well, this year's ornament features the regulator clock that's down in the Governor's Office in the lobby. And that clock was built about eight... Was made about 1870, and it's one of the very best timekeepers at the time, and it was used for the Western Atlantic Railroad, and then it was used for another railroad anyway. It's been in the state of Georgia, and it's been at the intersection of financial and industrial development and the expansion of the railroad for many years. Well, it was returned to the state of Georgia, and they put it outside the Governor's Office when it first came back to the Capitol, and at some point, some people said, "Well, it's just an old clock. It's not running anymore. Why do we need it?" Well, this is the rest of the story, and this is what I'm thankful for. We have a colleague that retired, former House Member, that was the Chair of Education, but he was also a clock keeper, a clock repairman, and a clock restorer extraordinaire, and his name is Brooks Coleman. And Brooks sat in to save the clock, and he pulled together the National Association of Watch and Clock Collectors, Atlanta Chapter 24, and the clock was repaired, returned to the Governor's Office, and it keeps amazing time, even though it's over 100 years old. And this year's ornament features the clock. He is so excited, and he would like for all of us to buy an ornament to help the Friends of the Archives. So if you don't know about these ornaments, they make wonderful gifts, and if you don't know about Brooks Coleman, you missed a treat. But the two of those together, I hope that you will choose to purchase one for someone you know that likes trains or clocks, and I hope you all have a very happy Thanksgiving. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
The Chair recognizes the gentleman from Liberty County, Representative Al Williams, for a morning order.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Chairman English, Representative Buckner, and I have agreed that just because it's old does not mean it can't function. How you want to take that? As I get ready to present my morning order, I did not mention this far, but about 30 seconds of the five minutes I've been allowed, I just went to mention very briefly, I have... All of us know it, but I don't remember it being said from the well. You know, every once in a while, you meet someone that has a terrific impression on your life. And if the Senate has any sense at all, it will confirm this friend of mine, who I've probably known most... Longer than most of you since 1975, when he raised his hand in this House. I was here working for Lieutenant Governor Zell Miller. I want you to know, Calvin Smyra, you've been a personal inspiration to me, and even though I know you're going to do hard duties, you'll get combat pay for being in Dominican Republic. But we're going to miss you, and that seat will never be the same. I just wanted to take a minute for us to thank you for your service and your friendship. All right. Now each of y'all get over to Calvin piece by the end of the day because it'll be Mr. Ambassador next year. Listen, I rise to just give you something to think about over Thanksgiving and over Christmas. What I want to talk about is kind of like a favorite person that you really had deep feelings for, but you were afraid to tell anybody about your feelings. But that's how it is for a pay raise in this House. Most of you know I'm right, but you're terrified to say it in your district, and it's only because you're more afraid of your district than your district is thinking about. If you think you're in trouble, you ought to talk to some of your city council and mayors that make so much more money than you do, and they're being re-elected year after year while you're sitting around 23 years terrified. Freshmen, don't get caught up in this 23-year hiatus. Do something about it. Let me tell you something. This is one of the most distinguished houses in America. It is one of the most distinguished. And the Bible says, "A workman is worthy of his hire." And you get exactly what you paid for. So some folk, I know you're going to leave, but it ain't going to have nothing to do with the pay raise. Because if that makes your constituents toss you out of office, you are hanging on by a thread anyhow. All I ask you to do is man up and woman up and deal with it. We are going to chase this House into the position, when I get to be 90 and still sitting in that seat, I will be surrounded by people who are either super-rich, dirt poor, or just ain't got nothing else to do because they're retired. You will leave some of the great minds at home because they can't afford to come up here and serve. And if you call 17 three-part time pay, I don't know what you used to do. That ain't part-time pay anymore. And I don't know about you, but every time I go to Walmart, I just move my office there because I'm entertaining. This is an around-the-clock job. Just had a lady call me and wanted to get her son a pothole fixed in front of her son's house. Ain't got nothing to do with me, but what did I have to say? I'll get right on it. You can do better than this. If you think you're worth 17 three and that's all, give the rest to your favorite charity and leave it on the table. You've got Dobson, you hadn't got to take it, and I know some of your churches will accept it, because some of you hadn't tired in so long, they'll be glad you give them I'm just trying to help some preachers out and say what they couldn't tell you. They scared that you lose you. Folks, and I'm almost finished, but just like the preacher this morning, I'm a Baptist deacon, and one "I'm almost finished" don't mean nothing. Let me tell you this right now. We have an opportunity. We make gutsy decisions here. We make decisions that requires a lot of guts, and then when it comes to yourself, what happened to the guts? Come on now. Because if you don't think enough of yourself, then think of the person you're terrified is going to defeat you, because if you're that scared of them, they're going to beat you anyhow. At least give them a raise. That's a long time to go without a pay raise. Count the times that Congress has gotten a raise since you got one. And people at home think you already get $170,000 a year and unlimited franking privileges, chauffeur and all this other stuff, get to ride in a black Tahoe. Hey, you just as well get paid a decent wage. And decent is... I'm embarrassed when I go out of this state and folk ask me what you make. I'm not embarrassed in Georgia because they already know I'm poor, but when I leave here, at least let me fool somebody. It's awful. I ask you to do one thing. Get up the courage. Get up the courage to make sure that we put a pay raise somewhere on the docket. And some of you that boldly walk up here and talk about how much you love the people, boldly walk up here and say, "I'm not afraid to give a raise after I go through one more election cycle." Come on, it's easy. And if you want me to, I'll come up here and hold your hand if you need a little holding up. Because it's obvious you're terrified. Come by my desk, and I'm going to borrow some oil from Representative Mike Jackson where I can anoint some of you to give you some courage. And when we get back in here, I know that ain't funny to you, but courage is what statesmen have. People who run away are just everyday politicians. Statesmen face the issue, and they face it above themselves. They do it for future generations and for the good of everybody around. Let's do a good thing. And for some of us, and I'm not pointing at either side of the aisle because it applies equally, I guess, but for some of us, a little dose of courage would make you feel better. It's about like castor. You don't like it while it's going down, but boy, it'll do you good. Please, let's stand in January and raise the pathetic rates that we're paid. We're paid less than part-time... Oh, full-time, part-time busboys and busgirls. My goodness, I made more money than that when I were busting tables. I'm going to have to leave here and find a job because I would have spent all the little money I had just serving up here. Listen. My mayor, one of my mayors, in a very small community of less than 1,000, makes $30,000 a year plus a car. If I had any sense and wasn't worn out from this House, I'd go home and run for that mayor's office. But I don't do it for the money, and you don't do it for the money either, but you ought to at least do it for the pride of being and serving in the greatest House in these United States. Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Thank you.
Any objection if the Chair calls a question? Call the question.
For some gone. Yes, sir. I called the question. I move that the Speaker, everybody in favor of a pay raise, rise, shine, and be counted. All right, Republicans, we won't tell on you. Y'all have to tell it. Come on. Alan Powell, a gutsy man scared to raise your, oh, my goodness.
We're going on now to the rules calendar. We're going on to the rules calendar. Clerk will read the caption to Senate Bill 2 EX.
Senate Bill 2 EX, by Senator Kennedy, 18th, Council of the 46th, Dugan, 30th, Gooch, 51st, Burke, 11th, and others, to provide for the composition and number of congressional districts. This matter having been assigned to the Committee on Legislative Congressional Reapportionment, that committee recommends that this bill do pass.
Chair recognizes the Chair of the Legislative and Congressional Reapportionment Committee, Chairman Bonnie Rich, to present the bill.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Ladies and gentlemen of the House, that is a very tough act to follow. I'm going to try not to bore you too much. I bring to you today Senate Bill 2 EX, which is the Georgia Congressional Redistricting Act of 2021. This process has been ongoing for months. The process that you heard me describe with respect to the state and the Senate House is the same process that we've been using for these congressional maps. We have had opportunities for public comment in person, virtually, and online. In addition, the Senate majority released a congressional draft, district draft, on September the 27th of this year to allow for public comment, and that is actually largely the map that you see before you today on your desks. The Democratic Caucus also released their plan on October the 21st of this year. So we in the House took the Democratic proposed map, the Senate majority proposed map, and then we also took into account public comments, meetings with you all, and we talked with the Chairman of the State Senate in order to reach this final map that you see on the screen and that is on your desks as well. You can see similarities to these maps that have been public for months. You'll notice that the 9th and the 14th are similar to what was originally proposed by the Senate majority. Districts 2 and 3 are largely what the Democratic Caucus proposed in their maps. Districts 2, 8, and 1, which are in the southern part of our state, were down in population significantly, 92,000, 45,000, and 10,000 respectively. Contrast that with the very large population gains that we had in the Atlanta area. The 7th alone had over 94,000 people, too many in that district. So you see a lot of the same pushing north that you had seen with the House maps as well. The 7th, let's see, the 6th congressional district is and continues to be a north metro suburban district. Much of the population from the 7th actually moved into the 6th. We prioritized maintaining the core of that district, so District 7 shrunk in, and much of what was on the periphery moved over to the 6th. The districts where minority voters have the opportunity to elect candidates of their choice are districts 2, 4, 5, and 13, and now the 7th is a new minority opportunity district under these maps that we drew. This map is at absolute zero deviation. That means that the districts are plus or minus one person as required by the Constitution. So that is a little bit more of a strict deviation than we are required to do in the House, but that is something that is a feat that our Gina Wright and her reapportionment office managed very well. This map also complies with the Voting Rights Act with several majority-minority and minority-opportunity districts that I just discussed. It also complies with our guidelines that were adopted by the committee. It respects county boundaries. The current plan that we're operating under splits 16 counties, and once again, we were able to do even better with the new plan. Our new plan splits 15 counties. In contrast, the Democratic proposed plan split 18. Some precinct splitting is inevitable. In order to reach zero deviation, there's simply no other way to get there, but we did split as few precincts as possible while reaching that goal, and we tried to find logical places to divide the counties. This map respects communities of interest, recognizing that these are very large districts, 765,000 people. They very often have to take in a lot of territory. While incumbents are not required to live in their districts in Congress, every incumbent member of Congress does have a district to run in. So you have a map before you that complies with the law, the Constitution, the Voting Rights Act, and it also represents the guidelines that our committee adopted. For this reason, I ask for your favorable consideration on Senate Bill 2 EX. Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I yield the well.
Lady has yielded the well. The Rules Committee limited debate on this measure this morning to a total of one hour. The Chair is going to allocate that 30 minutes to each side, and amongst those who are speaking in favor and opposed, I'm going to let you allocate that, and in 30 minutes, we'll just turn the microphone off. That does not include the minority report, nor does it include the Chairman's time. Chair recognizes to speak to the bill Representative Paris.
Today I rise in opposition of Senate Bill 2 EX. I'd like to preface my speech today with the fact that redistricting is some of the most important work that we do in this legislature. Every decade, we take on the task of redistricting. The redistricting process has a direct impact on women representation for Georgians in the United States House of Representatives, the Georgia State Senate, and the Georgia State House of Representatives. According to the Center for American and Women and Politics, women hold 30.47% of the seats in U.S. Congress, and women of color hold only 9.2% of those seats. Of the state legislative seats nationally, women hold 28.4% of state senate seats and 32.1% of state house seats nationally. Women of color hold only 8.3% of the state legislative seats nationally. These numbers woefully underrepresent the true demographics, gender-wise as well as racially, of not only our state, but our country as well. At a time when women are already underrepresented, particularly women of color, we should not be drawing maps that target women incumbents to make it harder for them to run and win in new districts. But the map before us today does just exactly that. With this congressional map, the majority party is targeting 50% of the women in Georgia's congressional delegation. With this congressional map, the majority party targets a black woman, one of only two in the delegation, in order to redraw her district to make it safely Republican, a woman of color that has been elected twice by the voters of the competitive district of Congressional District 6. With this congressional map, the majority party draws the Congresswoman of the 7th congressional district out of the district she represents. We cannot say to the people of Georgia, "We see you, we hear you, we are drawing fair maps, we want to be represented, we want you to be represented," while at the same time drawing lines that erase the extremely hard-fought gains of women, particularly minority women in this state. As I said before, redistricting is some of the most important work that we do in this legislature, and on this particular map, we have failed. I will be voting no on Senate Bill 2 EX. Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I yield the well.
Chair recognizes Representative Bodie to speak to the bill.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Today I rise in complete opposition to the Republican congressional map. This map does not take in consideration adequately communities of interest. It splits multiple metro counties, and it violates the Voting Rights Act. The population growth in Georgia over the last decade has been fueled by people of color in the metro areas across the state. The growth of communities of color has been seen mostly in the Atlanta metro area over the last decade. While the white, non-Hispanic population of the state has decreased by 4%, the African-American population has increased by 22%. The Hispanic-American population has increased by 31%, and the Asian-American population in metro Atlanta area has increased by 45% over the last decade. However, the Republican congressional map does not reflect this minority growth based on how the map is drawn. Last week during the floor debate on the Republican Senate map, I sat in my chair, and I listed, as a member of the majority party stated that their map and their well speak, and I quote, "Anyone who votes no on the Republican Senate map is exercising a dishonest based on partisan politics and buzzwords." Mr. Minority Leader, I don't agree with that statement at all. I voted no on the Republican Senate map, and I will be voting no again today on the Republican congressional map. Now, House Democrats are only asking that the new congressional map be drawn with a 7-7 split, seven Democrat-leaning districts, seven Republican-leaning districts. The Democratic congressional map is actually reflective of Georgia's current population makeup. It has a 7-7 fair split. So I ask you, members of this body, is it dishonest for House Democrats to fight for a fair 7-7 map when the Republican congressional map fails to take into account Georgia's 1 million new minority residents and shatters communities of interest? Is it dishonest for House Democrats to want to fight for a 7-7 fair map when Georgia is losing a Democratic-leaning congressional district that covers Cobb County, DeKalb County, and Fulton Counties, when based on the population growth and census data, Georgia should actually be gaining a new Democratic congressional district in Cobb County? Is it dishonest for House Democrats to want to fight for a fair map when Republican maps splits four metro counties, Fulton, Cobb, Gwinnett, Harry Counties, into three or four congressional districts? Not one rural county is split that many times. And is it dishonest for House Democrats to want to fight for a fair 7-7 map when Georgia has a Republican governor and two Democratic members of the United States Senate? With that, Mr. Speaker, I will yield the well with no questions. Thank you.
Chair recognizes Representative Wilson to speak to the bill.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Colleagues, as we've been down here for this special session, we've talked a lot about the process of this endeavor and whether or not it's been conducted in a transparent and open manner. And I've been struck, not just during this session, but throughout the past year, by how far the majority has gone to create the appearance of fairness. And I say appearance because now we have the map, and we can juxtapose the end result with the words we heard all summer and into the fall. And the truth now is quite clear. You've been saying one thing but doing another. You said we'd have an open and transparent process that would allow for actual citizen input, but what you did was hold a series of town halls months before any maps actually existed to discuss, and there were no town halls held in Cobb, DeKalb, Henry, Fayette, Clayton, Gwinnett, Newton, or Douglas Counties, although each of those are disproportionately affected by this map. Even worse, this map was only made public a few days ago. You said you'd endeavor to preserve communities of interest and keep them together, but what you did was intentionally split counties with large minority populations, the same counties where no town halls were held, by the way. What you did was intentionally draw the black voters of southwest Cobb County in with the overwhelmingly white population of northeast Georgia, deliberately drowning out these black votes and these black voices. You said this map would be fair and honest, but what you did was intentionally target incumbent women and voters of color to dilute their power and silence their voices. All of the sound and fury around making this a fair and transparent process is tantamount to lipstick on a pig. What you did was completely redraw the two congressional districts that flipped from Republican to Democratic the last four years, the 6th and the 7th districts. And I want to focus on the 6th district because that's where nearly all of my constituents live. Out of all 14 of the current congressional districts, the 6th was the closest to ideal population size following the most recent census. That means it should have required the least amount of redrawing. In fact, all that it required was to shrink by 657 voters. But what you did was target 355,000 people in the 6th district, mostly people of color, pack them into nearby Democratic districts, and then replace them with 355,000 mostly white voters. The result is that this district that voted for President Joe Biden by 12 points in 2020 has become a district that voted for Donald Trump by 15 points. The 6th congressional district was the most competitive in this state, and the map offered by the Democratic Caucus would have kept it that way. But this map makes your intent obvious, to legislatively draw and quarter Congresswoman Lucy Macbeth and scatter to the four winds all the black and brown voters that put her in office. A yes vote for this map amounts to race-based sorting, pure and simple, all for political power. You wanted more seats in Congress, and with this map, you'll have them. It's no wonder folks find it hard to trust anyone who wears this pin. The truth is, these maps are continuing the same experiment Georgia has been on for most of its history, the one that we continued in March by passing Senate Bill 202, dilute and suppress the voices of black and brown Georgians to keep white people in power. It's egregious, and it's shameful, and we all know it. The difference between the majority and minority positions here today is that we're willing to call this for what it is. The majority has the numbers, they have the votes, this map will pass. But this is why people have so little trust. But this is why people have so little trust for us. This is why they use the word politician as a slur. This is the continuation of the unabashed self-dealing we've seen so much of lately. It's a continuation of the big lie, calling something fake, radical, or even un-American until the words have no meaning anymore. The Georgians who sent us here deserve better. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Chair recognizes Representative Erica Thomas to speak to the bill.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I rise in opposition to this bill. When asked, "How do I feel about this bill?", I think of the words of the late Congressman John Lewis, "It's not right, it's not fair, and it's not just." This bill will affect, of course, the lives of all Georgians, but I am here to talk about Cobb County. When we talk about hearing the voices of the people, when we talk about how we went all over Georgia to talk to people that may be affected by this bill, did we come to Austell and to Powder Springs and talk to the demographic that's going to be affected by this bill? Did we come to Cobb County and talk to the people that are going to be affected by this bill with all the meetings that we did across the state? And I'll let you answer that question. And people ask, "Why are we so passionately speaking against this bill?" Because we are representatives of our people, and there are demographics of people that will not have a voice because of this bill. When we heard about the meeting that was had last week, and we didn't have as much notice, but we got it out to the people. We sent out text messages letting them know within hours, "Come to the meetings at 12 o'clock, come to the meeting at 9:30, get here." And did people show up? Yes. I had people in my district that dropped their kids off to school, and they were on their way here to the Capitol to speak because they wanted their voices to be heard. And they believed that their voices mattered when it came to these maps. And they spoke out. I had people in my district come and speak out how terrified they were to be in Congressional District 14, how they believed that their voices were not going to be heard if they were in a district that did not look like them, did not represent the values that they represented, and did not believe in the issues that they believed were true and just. And they spoke out, one after another, believing that maybe their voices might change the minds of the committee members, or even soften them a little bit just to give them a voice. Did that happen? Did anything happen after the people came and spoke up against the bill? No. The same map that was proposed before and after comment is the same map that you are voting on here today. So you tell me that you represent people and that their voices matter, and that on your badge it says "representative"? I cannot stand and say that I can truly speak out for the voices of my people if my voice is not being heard and their voices are not being heard with this map. When you look at this map, and you look at the top of this map that is a pinkish-orange, and you see rural Georgia, the congressperson that will be fighting for the issues of agriculture is not the same person that will be fighting for the issues of transportation and urban and things that we see in metro Atlanta. So how dare we give the people of Austell and Powder Springs no voice? The question still lingers. Why was Cobb County split to add a large population of people of color to Congress District 14? What is the redistricting criteria that justifies that sort of split? Because if the answer is the principle of one person, one vote, then why not draw from counties that are more demographically similar and would lead to a more compact district such as Fannin, Glimmer, Pickens, Bartow Counties? Why split and dilute the voting power of people in color in West Cobb and put them in a district that is so clearly where they do not belong? These are the questions when we leave here today that we have to talk to our constituency about. And this is the reason why I will be voting no, and I encourage you to vote no to SB 2 EX. I yield the well.
Chair recognizes the whip of the Minority Caucus, Representative Wilkinson, to speak to the bill.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Not long after I was elected, I had the honor of joining a group of legislators to hear from Supreme Court Justice Robert Bannum. Many of you know Robert Bannum, he was the first African American on the Supreme Court and the first to serve as Chief Justice. Justice Bannum said something that stuck with me throughout all of these years. He said, "The law, the law is the minimum standard by which we should conduct ourselves." I'm paraphrasing here, but that is, "The law is the minimum standard by which we should conduct ourselves." We can do better. We can do better for the people that sent us here. So when I hear these maps complies with the Section 2 of the Voting Rights Act, which many of us disagree is the case, is this chamber barely trying to comply with their interpretation of the law? Or can we do better? Are we keeping communities together, ensuring that Georgians are fairly representative? These congressional maps do not reflect the Georgia that we know exists today. That is why I'm here to speak against Senate Bill 2 EX. The Fourteenth District leaves Catoosa, travels through Chautauqua, and comes around the west side in the Cobb County, into South Cobb, my area. You want to talk about communities of interest? The only thing that ties those communities together is the sea that starts their county. The 2020 census shows that Austell is 60% black, 79% minority; Powder Springs is 55% black and 73% minority. However, the Fourteenth District in total in SB 2 EX is 13.5%. You don't have to be a CPA to know that's a huge difference. As my senator from the 33rd said on Friday during the debate in their chamber, "Powder Springs and Austell are very diverse communities. The residents of the community have shown that when given the opportunity, they can elect a candidate of their choice." In 2015, Al Thurman was elected mayor of Powder Springs after serving on the city council. He was the first African American mayor in Cobb County. In 2019, Ali Clemmons, an African American, was elected as mayor of Austell. Last week, community members heard from the committee members heard from the community the voice of concern of South Cobb, members like Valerie Testman, who came to the Capitol, a mother, she was, came to the Capitol as soon as she heard what we were doing to her community. Ms. Testman, who was an African American, came because her community is being placed in a district in which she does not share very many similarities. The difference between metro Atlanta and the North Georgia mountains is quite significant. You may ask why people like Ms. Testman never came to speak? I think previous people have mentioned that before. We never had an opportunity to have an equal voice. There were no hearings in Cobb, there were no hearings in Gwinnett, there were no hearings in DeKalb. Though I'm not on the reapportionment committee, I did have the opportunity to attend several of these hearings throughout the state. I heard citizens say they wanted their communities to be representative of what their beliefs were. At the Dalton hearing, I listened to how voters loved their current congressperson and wanted them to reflect their values. Don't the families in South Cobb deserve the same thing? I looked through the pages of testimony that we talk about, and I don't find one person that I can, that says that South Cobb should be part of the Fourteenth. I didn't hear it in the testimony, I don't hear it in the community. While I'm focused on the Fourteenth, many of you may say, "Look at the map in totality." I agree, we got to look at the map in totality. However, as any map drawer knows, changes in one place ripple across all districts, across all of Georgia. So if one, if the Fourteenth is tainted, that poison runs throughout the state. Cobb County is now split between four congressional districts. What is even more amazing is that the South Cobb area is split between three. South Cobb has three congressional districts now. That continues a long history of targeting the South Cobb area and that reduces minority voting strength. Now, let's talk about 2000. I know a lot of folks have wanted to talk about 2000, and I'm ready to talk about it because I'll tell you what happened in 2000 when I was sitting in Cobb County. This chamber, Republicans in this chamber drew a Cobb County commission that would have prevented minority voters from joining with the majority population to elect their candidate of choice in the District Four. Republicans were sued in court, and they lost. How do I know? Because I was one of the intervenors that sued in that case, that we defeated that map. We rose together, just like we will continue to rise together to stop the maps that we see today. The first African American commissioner was elected in that district. Now we have a county chairwoman, an African American, the first in Cobb County, that came from that district. What we do here in this chamber matters. I'll let the lawyers fight it out over this proposal. Does it comply with the law? I don't think it does. But I'll leave that to the advocates on one side, the high-priced lawyers on the other, and the judges sitting behind, making that decision. And despite what people may think, this is not about Marjorie Taylor Greene, or whoever the representative may be for that district. This is about fair representation. Fair representation not only for Catoosa County or Chautauqua County, but representation for South Cobb County. This map does not provide that fair representation to the families in South Cobb. So again, I ask, are we here to comply with the minimum standards of our interpretation of the law? Or are we trying to do what's right? I ask you to join me in voting against Senate Bill 2 EX. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Is there any objection to the previous question being ordered? The chair hears none. The previous question is ordered. We're going on now to the Minority Report, and by rule of the House, 20 minutes allocated for that. Chair recognizes for the Minority Report, the Minority Leader, Leader Beverley.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I rise in opposition to Senate Bill 2 EX, the Republican map for redistricting Georgia's 14 congressional districts. Because, in my opinion, this map puts power over principles, partisanship over people, and Georgia deserves our best efforts, and Senate Bill 2 EX is not it. The people of Georgia ask for and deserve a fair and transparent redistricting process. We are fully aware that the process was rushed and secretive, with the congressional map released just three hours before public comment was scheduled to begin last week. However, let me also tell you what I saw for my vantage point as a leader of the minority party during the entire special session, this legislative process. Before the census data was released, members of the Georgia House Democratic Caucus spent months becoming more knowledgeable about the redistricting process. Once the data was released, hours upon hours upon hours were spent carefully looking at the nuances of Georgia's districts. We paid close attention to communities of interest, listening to what fellow Georgians told us about their communities, including our congresspeople. In public comments at reapportionment committee meetings, town halls, and the statewide listening tour, we listened. And let me talk about the statehouse process for just a moment because it was instructive on how the rest of the process would unfold. Once the data came out, the Georgia House Democratic Caucus worked to adhere to the Voting Rights Act, to the U.S. Constitution, to the Constitution of this great state, and to the committee guidelines, and we listened to what our fellow Georgians told us about their communities in public comments at reapportionment town halls, at the statewide tour. After doing their homework, our members then sought to share what we thought districts should look like with the committee chair. But we were told, "Well, I can't meet with you right now because I'm busy drawing maps." Busy drawing maps. When the Republican House map was drawn and finally released, our members attempted to meet with the reapportionment office to look more closely at the Republican map. But we were met with a closed door, a locked gate with a detour sign that said, "Go see the chair first." Why does a member of this body need permission from another party to meet with a nonpartisan office in the General Assembly? What Georgia House Democratic Caucus members asked for was an opportunity to do their job, to represent the constituents that elected them to do so, to tweak a road, to river, a highway, a chance perhaps to keep a divided community whole. That's what we asked for. But instead, we were met with another closed door, another locked gate, and this time a sign that read, "No, I'm too busy drawing the maps." The reapportionment committee, Mr. Speaker, has most certainly changed, colleagues. It's no longer a joint process, a bipartisan process. It's the Republican way or the highway. And getting back to these congressional maps. As leader of the Georgia House Democratic Caucus, my responsibility is to help to ensure equity for all Georgians, to do what's right by our fellow Georgians, including Republicans in Coweta County, Democrats in Albany, and Republicans in Gwinnett. The Georgia House Democratic Caucus House map tried to do that, and the Joint House and Senate congressional map does that as well. The Joint House and Senate Democratic Caucus congressional map is illustrative of equity and fairness that Georgians ask for. However, that map before Senate Bill 2 EX is not. Senate Bill 2 EX is a direct result of a redistricting process that has not been fair to closed doors, locked gates, and to implement a process to discourage participation in the democratic process of redistricting. It is both flagrant, and it's disrespectful. Since this redistricting process was flawed and unfair at the onset, there can be no other result than what we see today: a flawed and unfair map. However, I believe ultimately that this unfair and flawed map will fail. Because whenever you put power over principles, given time, it'll fail. Whenever partisanship supersedes the will of the people, failure will always be the result in the long run, no matter what. Now, I deeply believe in the strength of our democracy, and my faith in our democracy will not waver. It won't. My friends, our democracy will continue. We will make the necessary adjustments, and we will thrive. Why? Because the people of Georgia are relying on us to do that. You know, I was once told by a member not of our party, the Democratic Party, that is, whom I've come to actually like and trust, that back in the day, when Elvis was gyrating his hips, dancing and carrying on, many people thought that the world in that moment was going to come to an end. Today, those moves wouldn't warrant a PG rating. So it may take a while for change to happen. It is sometimes slow, and it can be incremental at best. Sometimes, change even takes a generation to happen. Yet, in this case, it might not be so long. The principles of fairness and equity will always prevail over power. The principles of fairness and equity will always prevail over power, principles over power always prevails. And what principles am I talking about? We hold these truths to be self-evident, that all men and women are created equal, that they are endowed by their Creator with certain inalienable rights, that among these are life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness, that to secure these rights governments are instituted among the people, deriving their powers from the consent of the governed, little paraphrased. But let it be known that the people of Georgia do not, we do not consent to the majority's redistricting process, and therefore, we do not consent to these maps. Not just Democrats, but I believe Georgians of goodwill on both sides of political divide. The majority party had an opportunity, indeed an obligation, to implement a fair and transparent redistricting process, to work across party lines for maps that are equitable for all Georgians. Instead, they chose a process of closed doors, locked gates, and imposed processes to deter participation in the democratic process of redistricting. The result, a flawed, unfair map. Senate Bill 2 EX. Like tyrants of old, they changed the rules at the last minute, simply because they could. Power over principle, partisanship over people, Georgians simply deserve better. Mr. Speaker, I yield the well.
We're moving on now to the Chairman's time. Chair recognizes Chairman Rich for the Chairman's time, 20 minutes by House rule.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I yielded a portion of my time to the Speaker pro tem, and followed by that, a portion of my time to Representative Rob Leverett.
Thank you, Madam Chair. You know, as a member of the majority party, I'm willing to call it for what it is. What the map before you is a fair, legal map, and one that clearly reflects changes in population. I'm also willing to call it out, as it is, on the minority party for plucking out one congressional district, whether it's the 6th, the 7th, 14th, what have you, as though it represents a complete puzzle. It's misleading and disingenuous. The 6th congressional district, for example, the one that I currently live in and will after this map is approved, is a piece of a large, complicated, and changed population puzzle. That puzzle, the state of Georgia, has seen shifts in population growth that drove changes in congressional maps rippling east, west, north, and south. And yes, the 6th was short by a mere 657 persons, but the districts touching it and those not touching it required movements that the 6th and all other 13 congressional districts could not escape. For example, the 1st had to add 9,200 persons, the 2nd had to add 9,200 persons, the 3rd had to grow by 2,000, the 4th had to shed 8,600, the 5th had to shed 23,000, the 4th and the 5th, by the way, touched the 6th. The 7th had to shed 94,000, touching the 6th district. The 8th had to add 45,000, the 9th had to shed 10,000, the 10th shed 9,800, the 11th shed 37,000, the 12th had to add 26,000, the 13th had to shed 28,000, the 14th had to add 36,000. All of these changes required shifts in population, and so therefore, the districts were drawn to reflect those population changes. I'm definitely willing to call it for what it is, as a member of the majority party. And the map before you, and the process that was engaged in was fair, it's legal, it complies with the Voting Rights Act, and I ask that you vote in favor of this map today. Thank you.
Chair recognizes for a portion of the Chairman's time, the Chief Deputy Whip of the Majority Caucus, Representative Leverett.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Ladies and gentlemen of the House, I rise to ask that you support and vote for Senate Bill 2 EX, the proposed redistricting plan currently before you for U.S. congressional districts. And I ask your affirmative vote, even though I am not particularly enthusiastic about the new lines it draws through my area of the state. Nevertheless, I support this bill for two reasons. First, I believe it to be the result of a fair and legal process, and second, I believe that the resulting map involves a correct application of the legal principles that govern the redistricting process. As you all know, I'm new to the House, and certainly new to redistricting. I was warned earlier this year that redistricting was not going to be enjoyable. As I heard it described in various ways, I concluded that it's somewhat like a colonoscopy. It's not particularly fun, you don't want to do it, but you have to do it every so often. Of course, there's one significant distinction, in a colonoscopy, they give you something for the pain. To my knowledge, no such relief is afforded in the redistricting process, and if it is, I'm upset that nobody told me about it. You have to go through all this fully conscious and awake. But we don't have a choice, we have a constitutional and legal duty to perform this task. While this process is somewhat trying, I'm reminded of Winston Churchill's great comment about democracy. He said, "It's been said that democracy is the worst form of government, except all those others that have been tried from time to time," and so it can be said of redistricting. Not, of course, that it makes it any easier. My entire county, including me, is getting moved out of the 9th district and into the 10th. Keep in mind, I'm in an age in my life where I don't particularly enjoy change. So is my congressman, he's getting moved out, and so is another county in my House district. One county previously in the 10th will be split between the 10th and the 12th, another will be moved entirely out of the 10th and into the 12th, and that other county, which is now split between the 10th and the 12th, will be entirely in the 12th. This reminds me of the words in Ray Charles' song, "A Fool For You," where he sings, "And then you put on your crying, like you never cried before. You even cry so loud, you give the blues to your neighbor next door." That's about the way I feel. But as other speakers have said, this is not about any one district or one or two districts, it's about an entire state of them. I prefer that things not change, but that's not an option available to me, or really to any of us. As we've heard repeatedly, because of population changes, all the lines had to move north. That's not a partisan scheme, that's a demographic and legal reality. These counties that I've mentioned, in my area, were near the boundaries between districts, so in retrospect, it was somewhat inevitable, given the legal requirements, that those lines would move north, as they did, and that some counties might thus move into other districts. So I urge you to vote for this map, not necessarily because I like the result, because I believe that it complies with the law, it complies with the Constitution, and I would much rather we not abdicate our legal responsibility, but instead decide on these congressional districts and not shift the burden to a court as in years long past. So I urge you to vote in favor of this plan contemplated by Senate Bill 2 EX, because I believe that while it is not particularly satisfying to me personally, it is substantively valid and will satisfy the legal duty that we all share as a body. But I also urge your favorable consideration of this bill, because I believe the process by which it was achieved has been fair. Of course, we've heard many criticisms of that process today and at other times during this special session concerning the procedure and process of redistricting. And I don't mean to dismiss concerns raised by my colleagues, but I'm reminded of the story about the guy trying to cross the street. After waiting some time, he sees an opportunity to make it across safely, and he steps off the curb and starts making his way across the road, across the lanes of traffic to the other side of the street. No sooner had he stepped from the curb, however, than a car suddenly came around the corner and rapidly approached. The man hurried his step, but the car seemed to be changing its bearing and almost following him. He realized he was gonna have difficulty making it across the side of the street, so he doubled back to go back where he left from. But the car, again, seemed to change course and veer toward him. He then thought he could turn back toward the other side and make it across the street and avoid the car, but again, the car seemed to change its heading. He realized it was headed straight for him and he couldn't get out of the way, so finally he dropped to the ground and closed his eyes, anticipating the fatal impact of the car. And as he made peace with his maker, you heard the terrible sound of the screeching tires as they grow ever closer, and then it suddenly stopped. Although he thought he had perished, he then realized he was still alive. He opened his eyes and saw the car just a foot or two from him with the engine still running. He stood up and walked around the driver's side door where he found the window open. First, he didn't see one in the driver's seat, but then he looked closer and realized that there was a squirrel standing in the driver's seat with his paws on the steering wheel. The squirrel stared at him for a second or two and then said, "Ain't as easy as it looks, is it?" So we would all do well to heed the squirrel's admonition. I ask your favorable consideration of Senate Bill 2X. Thank you, Mr. Speaker, I yield the well.
Chair recognizes Chairman Rich for the final 11 minutes of the Chairman's time.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I feel the need to come up for just a few more minutes, I doubt that I will take my entire time, but I just want to clarify the record on a couple of things. As a mother and a law professor, it is in me to want to teach and to explain things. I have been told by legislators, much more seasoned than I, that that skill, that desire can be wasted here, because many people don't really want to understand, they just want to toe their party line. But just in case, there's anybody listening who really is interested, I want to try to explain something. I heard members standing up here saying that we targeted a woman of color, that we targeted a, this is a new phrase here, minority candidate of their choice, meaning the 6th district. Well, it doesn't work like that. The law requires that we draw maps that equally apportion the population among the districts, and that we give minority communities an opportunity to elect a candidate of their choice. It does not mean that a majority white district like the 6th that elects a minority candidate all of the sudden gets a lifelong protection under the Voting Rights Act for that incumbent. It doesn't work like that. We don't draw maps to protect incumbents, an individual who happens to be sitting in the seat. We draw maps for the people, for the voters, for the districts. Something else, I heard commentary from this well earlier, that we split multiple metropolitan counties. Let me remind you of the size of a congressional district, it's approximately 765,000 people. Let me remind you that the major metropolitan counties have more population than that. I also find that it is a bit hypocritical that members of the caucus that drew a 10th district, that basically eliminated it on the eastern suburban rural side of our state, and then moved it all the way across the metropolitan Atlanta area to the western side of our state, and not just the western side of our state, but into a more urban environment. I find it very interesting that members of that caucus who drew that map are finding fault with the map that we have drawn here, that respects district cores for all districts, not just the ones that are held by the Republican Party, that are Republican-leaning, respects the district cores for all districts. I also heard a speech regarding a 2000 lawsuit that was referenced, and I believe that unintentionally, it may have been misstated, that was actually a Cobb County Commission lawsuit that involved redistricting of Cobb County, and that particular map, I think, was approved by the Democratic majority here in 2000, as part of local legislation. So I just want to clarify that this, the Republicans in this body have not drawn a map that has been struck down or found illegal. I have to also address the reference to my canceling meetings. As many of you know, I had a personal tragedy, and I was not able to actually work on drawing the maps when I ideally would have. I also struggled with the fact that the majority of the Democrats had not met with me. So I did open up, in addition to the 88 and a half hours that I had made available, I opened up another day of meetings to hopefully meet with some of those Democrat members, and I was told that there was not time then. So I apologize, I offered to meet with members multiple times, and for anybody who waited until the very last day, which actually was an extra day that had gotten added, I apologize. But I also stand here and say that you chose partisan politics over representing your district, because the 11 Democrats who did meet with me were able to inform me and educate me about their districts. They represented their constituents well. Those of you who didn't, I'll say it again, because I seem to be criticized for it, you chose partisan politics over representing your constituents. I also want to address the transparency issue. This congressional map, this entire redistricting process, has had more transparency than I believe any redistricting probably has in history, and it certainly has more transparency and public input than any other legislation that comes through this body. For this map alone, this map was largely published, there were changes, but this map was largely published over a month ago. So for someone to stand here and say that we had a committee meeting hours after it was first published, that's not really, that's not very honest. We also, in my committee alone, had three days of hearings where we heard from the public, including a virtual hearing on Saturday, where we heard from every single person who wanted to speak. It's telling that of the 29 people who signed up to speak on Saturday, only 13 of them cared enough to actually show up. It is also telling that the majority of people who did come to speak at our committee meetings and at our public town halls were paid lobbyists for nonpartisan public interest groups, where they said the same thing at every meeting, day after day. We have heard through this process that our state has a history of gerrymandering to suppress the black vote. Let me just make this very clear. For the 100-plus years that the Democrats controlled the process, yes, yes, that was true. But for the two cycles that the Republicans have controlled the process, that is not true. And guess what? The courts have said just as much. There is a reason that we don't have a preclearance requirement now. This congressional map is fair, it complies with the law, the Constitution, and the Voting Rights Act, regardless of what activists and candidates for statewide office say. And I am confident that when truly nonpartisan legal scholars evaluate our work, they will affirm it. For that reason, I'm proud of this map, and I ask for your yes vote to Senate Bill 2 EX. Thank you, Mr. Speaker, I yield the well.
Is there any objection? Mr. Clerk, you wanna ring the bell? Mr. Clerk, you want to ring the bell? Is there any objection to agreeing to the report of the committee, which was favorable to the passage of the bill? The chair hears none. The report of the committee is agreed to. Shall this bill now pass? All those in favor of the passage of Senate Bill 2EX will vote aye. Have all members voted? Have all members voted? If so, the clerk will lock the machines. On the passage of Senate Bill 2EX, the ayes are 96, the nays are 68. This bill having received the requisite constitutional majority is therefore passed. Clerk will read the caption to a group of privileged resolutions.
Honoring the life and memory of Colonel Joe Slade Johnson. Honoring the life and memory of Levis Aldine Buster McConnell Jr. Honoring and celebrating the life of Mary Ella Dorman for the grand occasion of reaching 102 years of age. Honoring the life and memory of Marlene Pearl Robinson. Commending Gina Wright and the staff of the Georgia General Assembly Legislative and Congressional Reapportionment Office. Recognizing and commending Larry B. Box. Supporting the inclusion of the Republic of China, Taiwan, and the International Criminal Police Organization Interpol. Recognizing November 20, 2021, as trans-day remembrance. Recognizing and commending the United Way tombs in Montgomery and Wheeler Counties. Commending Scouts of Scouts BSA Troop 29. Recognizing and commending Johnny Denise Jackson. Commending Jamara Martin for being named Tony Elementary School's 2020-2021 Teacher of the Year. Commending Kristi Crittenden for being named Tony's Elementary Schools 2019 Teacher of the Year. And for other purposes, that completes the reading of the privileged resolutions.
Is there any objection to adopting the privileged resolution? The chair hears none, and the resolutions are adopted. Could I have your attention just a moment, please? Regardless of how you voted on the last measure, we have an outstanding group of people that have worked long and hard serving every member of this body, every member of the General Assembly. And they're on the floor now, and I'd like for you to give a tribute to Gina Wright and the members of her staff in the reapportionment office. The only birth, we have one, we have one birthday today, and that's not a member. Communications Director in my office, Caleb McMickin. Wish him a happy birthday. And I would be remiss if I didn't say, I know it's been a hard-working three weeks or so, but I want to wish all of you a very, very happy Thanksgiving. If I don't see you before, have a very merry and blessed Christmas with your families. You'll be in my thoughts and prayers. So let's just go home and enjoy the holidays. See you back, by the way, on January 10th. But we have one announcement. Chair recognizes Chairman Collins.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. At 2 o'clock today, the Public Safety Meeting will be held in 506 CLOB. There is a Zoom link, so we want to make sure and give the people their money's worth here today. So we're having a 2 o'clock Public Safety Meeting, 506 CLOB.
All right. Listen up. Chair recognizes the Majority Leader of this House for a motion.
Mr. Speaker, first, I would like to thank you and wish you, from your membership, a great Thanksgiving and a joyous Christmas season. Thank you for your leadership. Mr. Speaker, I'd like to move this House now adjourned. Signee die.
The Majority Leader has moved that this House adjourned this special session. Signee die. All those in favor will say aye. Those opposed will say no. This House is now adjourned. Signee die.